directions for you tonight. I will note that we have a completely new audio system in the council chambers. So if you notice anything weird or hear anything off, just maybe make note of it. So.
All righty.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the agenda. Roll call, we'll do Chad.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Aye, motions carries. Next is invocation, Christ the King Lutheran Church.
Hello, good to see you guys again. Always thankful when I have the opportunity to do the invocation with you. I'd like to start with a quote, and tonight's quote is going to be from Theodore Roosevelt, who said, "People don't care much about," excuse me, "people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." And I want to thank you because as I've worked with individually, many of you, it's clear you care, you care about your community, and it shows in the way you carry your business out. So thank you with that. Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, I come before you with a humble and grateful heart, and I ask that you give wisdom to those who are seated in places of authority, not only here but throughout our nation, from our president and legislature all the way down to these great elected leaders in front of us. I ask for wisdom, humility, and gentleness to rest upon our city council as they make decisions on our behalf for the whole community. Use them, O God, to help secure peace and prosperity, and help them ever to look to you for guidance. Well, Lord, we know that we are sinful, subject to fall short, so we ask for an extra measure of humbleness for each of our elected officials to know that wisdom only comes from you. Please protect and strengthen each of them and their families, help them enjoy the work you have put before them tonight and throughout their terms. We pray for the people of our community, especially those who live alone or have little family in these weird times. We pray for local businesses that are struggling. We ask, O God, that you provide opportunities. We pray for our police, and we pray that you keep safe all those that keep us safe. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Good to see you. Thanks again.
Thank you. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. Dave, you want to do the honors?
Glad to. Thank you.
Please stand and mute your mics, please. Dave, you'll have to unmute your mic and say the pledge, please.
You know what? You're absolutely correct. Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one inch in, one gap out, indivisible, perfect, and just as strong. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Threw you a little curveball there, but you come back swinging. I like that.
Thank you.
Next, the recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, we do have a resolution underneath there. We have Resolution Number 15292, accepting donations of $2,735.34 from the Hutchinson Farmers Market towards lighting project at the DePaul Pavilion.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to accept donation. Any other discussion? Roll call, Chad.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Public comment. Matt, is there anybody that wants to address the council?
Nope, there's nobody here tonight to address the council.
All right, I guess you do have a guest that you want to introduce, so you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as many of you know, we do, we have hired a new Park and Recreation Community Education Director, Lynn Newman, and she's here tonight to introduce herself to both you guys as the council and to the public as a whole. So I'll let, I told Lynn she had to give a 10-minute speech, so I'll let her come and address both you guys and the public.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I won't take too much of your time and give you a 10-minute spiel of my background, but I will give you a brief background of my education and how my path took me here. I was born and raised right here in Hutchinson, graduated from Hutchinson High School. Upon graduation, I attended St. Cloud State University, where I obtained my bachelor's degree in education, elementary and special education. Upon graduating, I spent the last 10 years working for, or prior, for the city of St. Cloud in their Park and Recreation Department, carrying a variety of different roles within that capacity. And then I, for the last year, was the Assistant City Administrator for the city of Glencoe before obtaining the Director of Park and Recreation Community Education with the city of Hutchinson. I'm really excited to be here with you and continue and serve this community of Hutchinson. So thank you for having me tonight, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Well, Lynn, can you kind of say who your parents were, because they did a heck of a job raising you?
Yes, my parents are Jeff and Don Wagner. So formerly, I was Lynn Wagner.
All right. Any other questions for Lynn? All righty, thank you very much, and glad to have you aboard.
Yes, thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Approval of minutes, we have the regular meeting minutes of March 9, 2021.
I'll make a motion, accept. I will second that.
Motion by Dave, second by Chad. Roll call, Chad.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, consent agenda, this will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is nonwaiver of tort liability limits for general liability. B is approval of purchase of 2021 belling trailer from Titan Machinery for Creekside. C is approval of collateral assignment of payment under redevelopment agreement with KGB Cornerstone Commons LLC. And D is approval of Resolution Number 15288, Resolution, uh, Resolution approving site plans at 225 Shady Ridge Road Northwest with favorable planning commission recommendation. Excuse me. E is approval of Resolution Number 15291, Resolution approving site plan for police station facility located at 205 Washington Avenue East with favorable planning commission recommendations. F is approval of off-site gambling permit for the Hutchinson American Legion Post 96 on July 14, 2021 at 301 Ontario Street Southeast Veterans Memorial Field. And G is claims of pro, pro, claims appropriations and contract payments. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled off? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve consent agenda. Roll call, Chad.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We do have a public hearing, so we will skip down to Public Works' ear-in report. Matt, who do we have tonight? Is that John or is that Kent?
That'd be Kent. Evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, and John Olson and Tim Grack are both here also this evening to answer any questions. Within your packet is our 2020 annual report. It's more of a summary format, a little different than what we've presented in past years, but this format is condensed. Like Matt mentioned, I believe, a couple of meetings ago, this is more the format that I think we're, he's looking to have all departments involved too, from an annual report standpoint. So with that, I'm, I think Matt can bring it up on the screen. I'll just do a quick overview. There's a lot more detail that exists, you know, with respect to public work finances, fiscal reporting, you know, operations and maintenance reporting within our water and wastewater departments, you know, inventory, infrastructure inventory, information that we maintain on an annual basis also. But yeah, we'll work through this quickly and answer any questions. I guess first and foremost, just a friendly reminder, and it's on the first page, but the Public Works Group is made up of eight formal city departments. Those are engineering, streets and roadways, cemetery, airport, hats facility, water, and wastewater, and then the stormwater utility fund. So those are the eight departments listed on the front page. The next page is our core services that we've identified within Public Works that we deliver on a, you know, not all of these are on a daily basis, but all of these are touched in some fashion throughout the calendar year. So a pretty significant list here. John Olson and I were just talking a couple of weeks or so ago, you know, there's, there's really a need to really touch upon, you know, our policies that are tied to these services. It's really an exercise that hasn't been done in some time. And so we're going to start looking at the specific policy language that's tied to each of these respective services and start to enter that process. You know, that's going to take some time to draft that language and fine-tune it, but we're just starting to undertake that effort. And then lastly, on the very bottom here, you know, all these services from a fiscal standpoint, you know, between all the budgets for the respective departments, and then our capital improvement plan, 2020, it was a budgeted amount of just over $19 million. So that's alluded to on the bottom of the page. Go ahead, Matt. And then we get into the respective departments, engineering, you know, obviously, we're in front of council quite a bit. I am, you know, presenting projects. I believe council is pretty in tune with our, our project development process on the engineering front. You know, we also obviously support other departments, whether it's, you know, planning, building, and zoning from a, you know, a private development standpoint, and the building department on occasion as the, as they're reviewing building permits and such. I think the other big thing is, you know, helping Miles out on the Economic Development Authority front, you know, as, as he's working through different potential developments or projects, you know, engineering staff is often called upon, you know, to help, you know, lay out infrastructure, develop a quick cost estimate, and things of that nature. Go ahead, Matt. Well, I should mention, yeah, like alluded to in the, in the text on the bottom of the page, and we talked about this months ago when Patrice Vanderbein retired, but yeah, you know, Pat was a 40-plus-year city employee. You know, I, I had some concerns, some anxiety, I guess, about her ultimate replacement and filling Pat's spot, but we were fortunate to, to get a very good employee out of the DMV department, Jocelyn Jacobson, who's been with us in the engineering group for a few months now, and things are going very well. So with that, go ahead, Matt. Operations and maintenance, this is what John Olson oversees on a daily basis. You know, this includes a gamut of departments and services. I won't get into all the details there, but they are listed. You know, John not only oversees streets, but also the cemetery and airport operations, water distribution, wastewater collection systems, and, you know, several other critical, highly visible services, mosquito control, leaf vacuuming, you know, some of the favorites from our, our taxpayers, our, our community members. We did lose a couple of people this year, not due to retirements necessarily. Couple individuals left our group, went over and worked with our, our friends that were at the utility over on Michigan Street. So we were sad to see them leave, but they moved on to, I guess, what they felt were better opportunities for, for their careers ahead of them. And, but we've been very fortunate to find two, two great replacements. We also did have a third member leave to go into the private sector, Mr. Schulte, and yeah, we've been, we've been very lucky on the hiring front in recent years. So sad to see people leave, but like I said, we've been fortunate from a staffing standpoint. Go ahead, Matt. Uh, what do we got here?
Water.
Yeah, there it is. Yeah, water department, no, this is still the, isn't it? Operations?
Oh, it hasn't caught up.
Yeah, I'd see it's not. Anyways, well, on the waterfront, nothing, which would be the next page, nothing too new there. Yeah, things are going very well on the, on the water treatment front. Mr. Levine up there, Eric Levine, our water supervisor, is doing a great job, has a great staff up there, a couple of individuals that are directly assigned to the, the water plant. And Eric and his staff continue to evolve, you know, into really handling projects, handling a lot of their maintenance in-house. And, you know, Eric himself has really come up the learning curve from a fiscal, you know, departmental management standpoint, so all good on the waterfront. You know, from a, we don't have the volume information, but you know, water volumes continue, you know, to be relatively stable. You know, we talked for years about really hitting bottom from a, of water production volume standpoint. I think we're there. We haven't seen much change the last three, four years. Go ahead, Matt. Wastewater, I'll just lead right into it. Likewise, Tim Grack, he and his staff doing a great job out there, like we've been talking with council for the last few months. There's, there's needs, definite needs at the wastewater plant. You know, basically, half of the, over half of the treatment capacity is 35 years old. You know, was built, the plant that was built in the mid-'80s. So like we've been talking about on the wastewater headworks project front, you know, there's definite needs there that need to be addressed. We're at a, we're at a point now, from a financial standpoint, where we can address those needs. And yeah, we'll be delivering projects and other improvements in the near future. And yeah, I guess the other big thing is our wastewater effluent permit renewal with the PCA. That's underway, and we're working through that issue, you know, in correlation or in par. Catch up myself here.
For some reason, I've lost connection, so.
No big deal. It's in the packet. I'll just keep moving along. 2020 significant accomplishments, obviously, from a project standpoint, the big one was Highway 15, Main Street, not only the downtown portion of the project, but also the, the overlay on the south end of town, south of 15. Some business owners and the traveling community as a whole. You know, everybody had patience. We didn't hear a whole lot of negativity. And yeah, thanks to everybody involved on that front. Otherwise, I guess, yeah, you know, that was really the, obviously, the big project last year. You know, we did list within the report several things that were accomplished, smaller well-type projects and wastewater projects with respect to grit disposal and removal, HVAC system, things of that nature. We did need to be responsive, you know, on the, on the airport Civil Air Patrol site front, and the city staff was able to put together a project, get those utilities in the ground last fall. And yeah, things are situated for the Civil Air Patrol to, to basically just start on their site work at any point. I believe they, they are going to be going to the Planning Commission next month with their site plan, so that's good news, and they'll take off on those utilities in the near future. Other accomplishments, yeah, really, you know, the, the significant ones, you know, outside of the projects were probably were the bonding allocation for the lakes and river basin sedimentation improvements, you know, that, that was a blessing that was arrived at last fall within the state bonding bill. Yeah, that's, the other one would be the rate study, water rate, water wastewater rate study, that's still underway. We did take a little bit of a break last year, but we are getting that started again, and hopefully we'll have that, or a final draft of that come, oh, mid to late summer. So then we can entertain the thought, if we want to do something differently, water and wastewater rate-wise going into 2021. Major goals and objectives listed within the report for 2021. You know, we'll talk a little bit more here shortly about the, I guess, the primary project, which is our pavement management program project to the east of the rec center area. We're also looking at, or we have awarded, for that matter, the Highway 7 in Montana, crossing improvements, the HOCS system. So that's been awarded. The materials have been ordered by the contractor, and what they're telling us is they should be getting those signal system materials, poles and mast arms right around the Fourth of July. Other major projects, like I said, hopefully we'll be set, we'll be finalizing the rate study. We've talked a lot about the control systems, the SCADA systems at the water and wastewater plants. The final design of that project is currently underway. Hopefully, in the next couple of months, I think we're thinking May timeframe, that design work should be nearly completed, and we can start building the bid documents for that, that project and get that out for bids. And I think the other big thing looking at, and we've been examining this for some years now, is the transitioning, a more comprehensive transitioning of our, our streetlights to a, to LED fixtures. So not only just doing them within the context of a street project or, or new development, but I'll point out there and doing a proactive replacement program at, over the course of probably six to seven years. So if all goes well, and we're able to coordinate appropriately with Hutch Utilities, hopefully we can get that underway this fall, next winter, in essence. That's pretty much it. Goals and objective wise, just more for historical purposes, we, we include the, the last community survey and the items that pertain to Public Works. I won't get into any details there. There's also a brief section on the pavement management program inventory, basically the PCI scoring of our, our street system. We do do an annual report on this, so I won't spend a lot of time. I guess the, we did do an actual physical inventory this year, where the consulting comes out every three years, and inventories all the streets, counts the cracks, does a scoring, administers a consistent scoring system. So, so we're relatively certain that, you know, each report is apples to apples then, instead of having variability introduced by having staff do it. So we do spend a little bit of extra money to, to arrive that, arrive at that consistency within the, the scoring. And that arrived at a score of 76, which is above the range of 65 to 75, which is our targeted range. So things are looking good on the street condition front. Obviously, there's, there's some streets that are in need of repair and can confidently say that the majority of those are identified within our five-year CIP, upcoming pavement management program projects. There's also a need, and what it's alluded to within the text of the, the report, to move away from seal coating per se and move more towards overlay approach. We're, we're getting to a point on some of these roadways where their condition is beyond, you know, a seal coat fix, and really needs to go move into more of a costly, long-term overlay approach. And a lot of those roadways that need to be addressed in that manner are, you know, streets, collector-type streets that are 20 years old, give or take. So that'll become more of a focus moving forward. And then lastly, in the back, we, what we do is we take information out of a utility rate survey that's administered by a regional, upper Midwest regional utility consultant. Primarily, they, they do work in the Dakotas and, and Minnesota. And like what's shown on the screen here, which is actually the accumulation of the sanitary sewer water and stormwater bills. You know, this is far from scientific. It's, it's completely voluntary who responds, but they do do it in, on an annual basis. And if you compare one year to the last, it's, it's usually the same cities, for the most part, responding every year. So there's some consistency to it. Not too many years ago, when we did the plant expansion, you know, on the wastewater side in '08, following the, the water treatment plant being built in '06 and brought online, you know, we were very, very, if not on the right side of this table, very close to the right side. As we've, you know, stabilized our rates, you know, thankfully, in a large part due to the, the sales tax that was implemented, you know, almost 10 years ago, now we've, we've fallen more towards the middle. And yeah, you want to go ahead, Matt, if it'll flip forward? The, yeah, like I said, the, the first slide there was accumulation. This is the, the water rates. The dash line is kind of the, the outstate average. So, you know, it's showing that we're, we're falling right on the, the average line right now with respect to who's responding. You know, we are less than some of our regional center counterparts in this area. You know, Marshall and Wilmer and New Ulm are on, are within this survey. You know, Glencoe, just down the road, obviously, in McLeod County, we're, we're less than them. So we are doing much better from a, from a rate payer standpoint and how things have played out over the last few years. And like I mentioned earlier, we also are in a, a very good financial position, specifically within the wastewater fund, to address infrastructure needs and plant, treatment plant needs. Go ahead, Matt. Yeah, and this is the wastewater table. Like I said, similar to the water chart, we're falling right on the outstate average, give or take. So yeah, not so long ago, like I said, we would have been right on the, the right edge of this, this graph. And then I think the last one is, yep, stormwater. Yeah, we're a little below average as far as outstate cities are concerned. So yeah, I believe we're, we're more than fair with our, our stormwater utility rates. I believe we, we deliver a heck of a value with the. with what, with what we utilize these funds for. These funds are going to stormwater, you know, utility type projects and infrastructure and improvements and operations such as, as street sweeping. We are not leveraging, you know, this rate, you know, this fund to, you know, support other operations where, you know, I, I think it's no secret this, these funds can be leveraged. Specifically this one to support other operations, you know, within a city, you know, street department per se. We are, we're, we're not doing that by any means. You know, these, these funds, these, these rate dollars are being used to address purely stormwater needs and, and that's especially important. We are, we are a river, you know, lake community. So we need to pay attention to that and make sure that these dollars are, are going to, to those needs and to, to protect our, our water bodies. And I believe that's it. So with that, if there's any questions, thoughts?
Say Kent, I don't know, John there, you know, I've been driving around. I haven't seen any real bad frost boils. So have we dodged a bullet this year or not?
I think John's right here, bud. Yeah, I think so far, so good.
Yeah, we, we went out, we looked at, I think we have a, well, I would say a mittful of them, smaller, smaller issues around town that the staff and I have, have kind of been working on. I think our, the drier conditions going into last fall is what is going to help us out quite a bit. And you know, we had some early warm weather and some rain and so we're seeing the frost going out. I don't think we'll have near the problem we had a couple of years ago. So it's looking good that way. We do have a handful, like I said, in certain areas that we'll be dealing with fairly soon. So.
So those are mostly the usual spots then, John, or are there some new ones?
Yeah, there's some, there's, there's, there's one road that, you know, was kind of on the edge before and then this just kind of pushed it over the edge and and the others are in a spots where we would expect them to be. So.
Alrighty, thanks, John. Anything else for John or Kent or the water boys? Alrighty, thanks.
Thank you much.
Well, Kent, I guess you don't go too far, huh? We have a public hearing.
Yep, Mayor Council is six o'clock, so you can move forward with item number eight on your agenda.
Mary Kent, welcome back.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, like mentioned, within the item, what we're here for this evening is to administer the assessment hearing and then recommend the project award for the 2021 pavement management program project, letting one project twenty-one dash zero one. With that, I know there was some, some questions with respect to the, the assessment approach. We will all address those a little later on here. But we'll do a, a brief overview of the project and I think it might be best if Matt can bring up our, our plan sheet that shows our staging plan. Yeah, I think it's, we don't have to read the text by any means, but it's more so the, the graphic and it's a pretty simplified black and white graphic that, like I said, is included within our, our plan documents. The, the crosshatched, you know, the, the, the wider, I guess, of the streets that, those are the streets that will, that will ultimately be addressed with a, a reconstruction approach, what we're calling a partial reconstruction approach. You know, those are primarily the roadways that were impacted by the storm sewer piping that was installed last fall. So, and in the, in the north segments of Harrington and, and Merrill weren't so much impacted by that pipe work last fall, but we've identified those structures as, as needing a reconstruction approach of some sort and, and not being able to get away with a rehabilitation reclaim approach that we're administering on the other roadway segments that are in the more darker shading, which would be the two blocks of Church Street, the block of Lindale Avenue and then the easterly long block of Clinton Avenue. So there's two different construction approaches involved here. Thus, there's two different assessment rates that are involved. And then also there is the parking lot, rec center parking lot work. That's the work that we've identified to happen first. We've identified a project start date of early May that's specified within our, our specs and our, ultimately our project contract. And the completion date for that is Friday, June third, which is the Friday before the Aquatic Center, their scheduled opening, I believe, happening the following week. So we've outlined this for the, for the contractor, what our expectations are. Albeit, we are somewhat at the whim of the weather, obviously, like John mentioned. So far, so good. We had a, you know, a fairly dry fall. We've had a, you know, a fairly early spring with frost going out of the ground here now and as long as we can keep it on the dry side and, and the weather is favorable in May, we should be able to, you know, address that parking lot work. There's not a whole month's worth of work there. The contractor has a month's window, basically the month of May to do the work, but in reality, there's probably ten working days of actual construction work to be had there. So with that, yeah. Just to summarize the schedule ultimately, basically May will be the rec center parking lot. The contractor at that point in time can, can start on the, the darker shaded streets in May, you know, the reclaimed rehab streets, church and Lindale and the east end of Clinton. And then once those are put back together, that'll allow for people then to park on those streets as we get into the more involved, you know, reconstruction type work on the cross, crotch cross had streets of Harrington, Clinton and Merrill there. And you know, those streets will be, you know, more disturbed thus that people can park on the reclamation streets during that stage of the project. So, and this all sets up for us to be done in probably mid-September. So I think we'll have everything paved prior to school being back in session come Labor Day timeframe. But yeah. I think we have a good project here. We obviously got a, a head start on it last year with the pipe work and yeah, I think things can play out fairly well from an aquatic center standpoint and, you know, from a adjacent property owner standpoint, also from an access parking, you know, standpoint, I guess. So I don't know if there's any questions with respect to the project scope, schedule, approach? Alright, with that, I'll just jump right into the project bids. Like what's alluded to within your, your packet is, is the bid tabulation. We also had, we also have the two resolutions. And then lastly, we have the proposed assessment role. The bid tabulation shows the seven bidders. The low bid was from Landwear Construction out of St. Cloud. A lot of the other bidders that were, are very familiar with us, but we have not had Landwear as a general contractor on any of our projects in the time I've been here. They've been around for some time, but they are getting more and more involved in, in municipal highway type work. They, they were the general contractor on the Litchfield Highway twelve reconstruction project that occurred over the past two summers. So spoke to MINDOT staff. They were very, very complimentary about the, the work they did over there in Litchfield and how they managed their project. So with that, we were recommending that we award the project to, to Landwear. The, the ultimate low bid was about seventeen percent below our estimate. We, we believe that's due to the, the time of year that we, we did the project. And yeah, and the number of bidders, obviously. Seven bids on a, a project of, of this type is, is very abnormal. I think, you know, we're, we typically see the, you know, the three or four usual contractors and that's about it. And I think other contractors in the region sometimes believe that those contractors are going to be so competitive here in, in Hutchinson that they don't bid the job. But yeah, I think we were fortunate that we did get a very good bid from a responsive contractor. I should say the, the estimate was probably on the conservative side, you know, based on recent, you know, bid prices that we've seen. So, you know, it, it was, the bid was ultimately seventeen percent lower than the estimate, but I should say that the estimate was on the high side, you know, and that reflects where the construction in industry, specifically the roadway construction industry has gone in the last few years. And yeah, lastly, I'll touch on the, obviously there were some emails with respect to the, the assessment approach. And I, we've talked about this, you know, this came up at the public hearing, you know, many months ago, at, at this point, you know, back in, back in twenty twenty, you know, and at that point, it was noted that we did not apply a rate, an assessment rate reduction based on the width of the roadway. And, and that's been an approach that's been administered for, for some time. It's not within our policy. It's not within our fee schedule that sets these rates. It's been what I would say is a, a reduction that's been applied. I think to make, make the amount of special assessments being administered against a property, I guess, more favorable to the property owner. It is some, it is contrary to our assessment policy for that matter. And I believe it was, looking back on the history of it, it was introduced, that approach was introduced when we had a varying street width in, in a project many years ago. And the thought was brought up, well, why should, you know, somebody on a forty-foot wide street pay the, the, the same as a thirty-six-foot wide street? I didn't bring that up from a, from the city standpoint or the, or from a project, you know, assessment standpoint. I believe the benefit to the property owner is still the same and that we could have justified it. It was more of a, it was morally, more so brought up by a council member at that time and, and what you know, was believed to be an inequity, I guess. But you know, purely from a state statute standpoint, we, we assess or the city has the ability to assess per state law as long as they can justify that there's a benefit that is reflective of that amount to that property. And at the level we're assessing, whether it be this project or projects moving forward based on our rates that are established within our fee schedule, I don't think there's any doubt that we can justify and defend the amount of the assessments that are being administered. So with that, there was a decision or a discussion that was had by, you know, by city administrative finance and engineering staff. We, we determined due to the fact that we're only capturing, even with the favorable bid, we're only capturing about eighteen and a half percent of the total project cost, you know, with assessments. So we're not, we're not funding even the, the twenty percent threshold with the special assessments within this project. So, you know, to further reduce that amount, you know, would, would take it down to, you know, probably seventeen, sixteen and a half percent. You know, so it's really a financial decision, you know, that was made from, for the city's behalf as a whole. Like I said, I don't think there's any, any debate, any doubt that the, the benefit to the properties is, you know, is much beyond what's being assessed regardless. I don't know, there's any thoughts or questions on that front?
That approach makes sense to me, Kent. Thank you for the explanation on it.
I agree with you, Kent. Again, thanks.
Yep, not a problem. So with that, go ahead, excuse me, Gary.
Oh, go ahead, Kent.
Yeah, I was just gonna say with that, that's all I.
Kent, we should touch on the terms of the assessment.
Oh, yeah, we can do that quickly. Yeah. Yeah, as, as noted in the notices to property owners, the terms of the assessment, it's a ten-year term. You know, and the property owner always has the ability to pay the assessment. You know, prior to typically, we, what we'll do is we'll send out a final notice in, in mid-October. At that point, we'll know the interest rate for the bond issue. Which usually happens, the city issues bonds in, you know, August, September timeframe. So we'll have that right, that rate. So what we'll do then is send out a final notice to all property owners being assessed on this project and, and other projects. And, you know, stating their final assessment amount, which we don't believe going to change unless there's input from council. So it'll be the amount that's been, you know, basically communicated from the very beginning of this project. And then we'll state the interest rate. We'll state a deadline. Usually it's November fifteenth. A property owner has the ability to come in and pay all of the assessments, a full principal amount off or a portion of it. Whatever remains then gets sent down to the county and then it gets, you know, spread across a ten-year term on their tax statements.
Right, Kent, anything else?
That should do it.
We have a scheduled public hearing tonight, and so this is the opportunity for the, the public to address the, the city council regarding any questions or comments on the project and/or the proposed assessments. So Mayor, I'll hand it back over to you with any instructions you will have for the public.
Do we have anybody that wants to address the council, Matt?
We have people in attendance. I would say if there is a desire to address the council, that they come forward to the microphone here at the podium. We just ask that you state your name and address for the record and you're welcome to ask any questions of the city council and our staff associated with the project. And we do have somebody that's attending virtually too, and this would be their opportunity if they wanted to to ask any questions of the council or the, the staff on this project as well. Anybody in attendance that wants to address council? Mayor doesn't see anybody that's coming forward.
Alrighty. Intertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll suck at that.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to close the public hearing. Roll call, Chad.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Hi, motion carries.
Alrighty, have a motion to accept the two resolutions.
Make a motion to accept the two resolutions.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to accept resolution number one, five, two, eight, nine, and resolution number one, five, two, nine, zero. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, Chad.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Hi, motion carries. Thanks, Kent.
Thanks, council. And yeah, just quickly, want to send out a big thank you to the adjacent property owners, you know, specifically on those stretches of, of Harrington and, and and, and, uh, and Merrill and Clint that were impacted with the pipe work last fall. So, uh, you know, city staff has been out there trying to do the best we can, you know, with the gravel surfacing, and it's behaved fairly well. But wanna thank those property owners and, uh, you know, people that travel through that area on a daily basis for bearing with us. You know, we did have an opportunity last fall and, and arrived at a significant savings for that work. But obviously, uh, you know, somewhat of a hardship for those, those residents, so thanks to them. Good night.
Yes, uh, and, uh, thanks to everybody that lives along those corridors for putting up with the, with the winter, but, uh, came through pretty well. So, uh, moving on, new business, um, police dispatch function layoff.
Gary, I just wanna note, especially for those that are in attendance, that the, the staff wouldn't make themselves available on the lobby if they had any additional questions, um, before they left, so.
All right, thanks, Matt. Uh, new business, police dispatch function layoff severance proposal, um, provide direction for a city administrator to move forward with the severance program.
Um, Mayor and Council, we have our HR Director, Brenna Union, with us tonight, and I'll let her kind of introduce, um, this agenda item and maybe go in a little bit more detail on what's being proposed tonight.
Thank you, Matt. Um, good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, we did provide some background information and some severance program proposal estimates in your packet, but as Matt noted, just like to give a little more background information, um, and of course, would address any questions you might have regarding these proposals. Um, I believe as the council has been made aware, the emergency dispatch function with the Hutchinson Police Services is not to be continued as the department transitions to the proposed new facility and is actually planned to be discontinued no later than August thirty-first of this year. So such action will result in the reduc- reduction of staff by a layoff action. The employee layoff process is subject to the police civil service rules, and the city council at a later date will be furnished with the proposed layoff actions by the Hutchinson Police Commission. Um, in an effort to maintain our current dispatch function as long as possible and up to that August thirty-first date, and just due in general to a layoff action taken on employees, city and police administration have proposed offering a financial severance package to those employees who would be subject to layoff. Uh, we are proposing both a voluntary and an involuntary option for affected employees that has been laid out in your packets. Um, city history, just, uh, to give some additional information, does include, uh, similar severance package that was offered to dispatch employees when the function was turned over to McLeod County way back in nineteen ninety-eight. And we have also used severance programs when we had major citywide staff layoffs in both two thousand three and two thousand ten. Um, the proposals that are in your packet are based on time in the position and specific formulas noted on the examples. Um, as is expected, the voluntary option, if chosen, is generally more advantageous financially to the employee in regards to the level of the severance payment. But both options do require that the current employer remains an active employee through the date the city ceases that dispatch function, whether that is August thirty-first or earlier. Um, it should also be noted that it is possible that up to two current dispatch employees may be retained and continue working for the city in a police facility reception and police records position. And if so, those employees would not be eligible for the severance pa- package because, of course, they would not be subject to a layoff. Um, if this would occur, of course, the anticipated costs that have been noted, um, on the city board action forum would be decreased accordingly. Um, currently, we have six dispatch employees, three full-time and three part-time, currently working for us, and it should be noted that we so appreciate and acknowledge their service to the city, the department, the officers, and of course, other emergency services that they serve. Um, if approved by the council, um, the city will communicate the severance proposals to the affected employees, and we are required to provide them with ample time to consider proposals and make their individual decisions, whether to accept the voluntary or involuntary packages. And we have proposed that, uh, employees notify us by June first of their decision. Um, I think police and city administration feel that we currently are at minimum staffing levels at this point, and we're very much hoping to use this severance program to incent those existing employees to stay with us until we, um, cease that dispatch function. So with that, um, if anyone has any questions for me or for Matt, we would certainly entertain those.
Like I said, I think our, our, our biggest hope and intention is, is that, you know, we can continue to provide this service until the time that, that makes sense. Um, and as Brenna noted, you know, as we look to move forward with a, a new function and new services at the, the potential new facility, um, that there's a potential that some of these will, will stay on and, and assist us in, in those areas. But like I said, we, we would like to be able to provide, um, dispatch, at least through the month of August, where we believe that give us enough time to prepare for that transfer over to, to the county. So as Brenna noted, this isn't new for us, it's something that we've done in the past. Obviously, not often, but, um, we have provided incentive packages in, in the past. So I'm glad we take any questions you may have.
I think it looks good, so, uh, entertain a motion to approve this.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to approve. Any other discussion? Not, roll calls, Chad?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. All right, moving on, governance, we have minutes, reports from committees, boards, or commissions. We have the planning commission minutes from December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. That's all, it should be two thousand twenty, huh?
Yes, so.
Okay. Uh, City of Hutchinson financial report and investment report for February two thousand twenty-one. Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from February sixteen, two thousand twenty-one. Motor vehicle, two thousand twenty recap. And, uh, two thousand twenty residential leaf vacuum service report. All righty, uh, Kent, uh, Kent have anything else for us tonight?
Staff updates, Kent? No, I don't think so. Nope, good, he doesn't have anything, so.
All right, is, uh, Chief Gibson there tonight?
Yes, he is.
Well, I got a couple things for him.
Sorry, Tom, he can't get away that quick, so.
Good evening, chief. Say I had somebody ask me if you could put our speed, uh, trailer up on Second Avenue by the, by the school? Just, uh, maybe track, track, track some, uh, she said that they're racing up there, so I said, well, we do have a nice trailer that would confirm that or, or deny it, so, um, could we do that?
We, we can, absolutely.
All righty, you got anything else for us tonight?
I really don't, unless you have some other questions for me.
Nope, thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
We have anybody else there? Is, uh, John Olson still around, or did he run out?
No, he's, he's not here, he's gone.
Okay, I guess, uh, everybody else took off on us, huh? All right, hey, Brandon, how about we start with you tonight?
Brandon's good, everything is good. Um, I don't have any updates, I was just gonna ask the question though, and, you know, no pressure or whatever, but, um, with everything changing in, in the world and things kind of seem to be getting better if, uh, moving into the chambers again for our meetings would be an option. Um, you know, in the near future, I don't know. Just a thought, I mean, s- you know, staff is there or whatever, I didn't know if council could meet again in the chambers.
That's kind of funny, Brandon, 'cause I had a little conversation with Matt. I had, Matt, I had to talk to him about something else, and I kind of run that by him too. And, um, I don't know, Matt, what'd you think, in maybe a month, maybe, or what?
You know, like I said, i- it's really, uh, the comfortability level of, of the council, um, and when you would like to, to meet back in the chambers. I know, I think April fifteenth was a day that was put out, or I think the kind of the return to, to work. Um, I don't want to say it was a, a mandate, but there was the option that if you didn't, you know, if you, if you could work outside of the workplace to do that. I know, I think the governor has noted April fifteenth is kind of that restriction being, um, lifted. And I think it's really just the, the comfortability level up to the city council. It was you guys that made the decision to, you know, to, to meet virtually, and it's really up to you, I think, the emergency powers that we put in place at the time really said it's gonna be up to a majority of this, um, majority decision of the city council when you want to come back and, and, and meet in person. You know, there's, I was just thinking, there's some things that we can do here in the council chambers, um, to make people a bit more comfortable. I'm thinking about, you know, potentially dividers in between, um, the seats here, i- i- if that's a desire. Like I said, it's really up to, to the council, um, uh, what your comfortability level is, um, on, on meeting in person. And, and I will say, we do have, Tom, you can shake your head at me, we do have greater flexibility now with the improved equipment to where if somebody wanted to continue to meet virtually, um, that is still an option, and we can still continue to meet here in the chambers. Tom, if you wanted to add?
That is an option.
We just went through an upgrade, so there, we have greater flexibility now than what we did a, a year ago as well.
Anyway, it's just a thought, and I think, yeah, if it's an option, um, that's wonderful, you know, wanna.
Uh, Brandon, would you be comfortable with maybe saying that, uh, the first meeting in May, we would meet back in chambers, or I don't know what the rest of everybody else, but that would work for me?
Yeah, I didn't have any timeline, and I just wanted to, you know, just bring it up and ask, ask the question. I didn't know if somebody else was asking, so, um, May is, is great, or if, whenever, yeah.
All right, Mary, what do you think?
Well, Dave and I are the oldest ones on here, but I would be totally vaccinated after tomorrow, so I think, okay with May.
If it doesn't make any difference, like, I'm, I'm gonna stay virtual until I'm fully vaccinated just because I don't want to be on a quarantine for ten days this time of year 'cause I, my shop is only profitable, um, for a very short window in the spring and summer, and we're right in the heat of that, so I, I just don't want to be on a quarantine. But if everybody else wants to get together, that's fine, and I can just chime in. I'd like for Tom to really dazzle us with his tech and have some of us be in person, some of us be online, and, you know, he can really show off the new system, so.
He says he's up for the challenge, so he's shaking his head at me, so.
I think Chad, that will just get you in line to get, get vaccinated.
I'm in the next wave, 'cause I'm transportation support, like, they're doing one B now, and they, um, I'm in one C, and the other cutoff is for people under forty-five or over forty-five, and I'm just under forty-five, so like, I'm just under a lot of qualifications right now, so, um, I should be in the next wave of people that gets it. So I'm, I'm about eighty-five different, uh, tracking things to get a vaccine, and I just haven't been called yet, so.
Mary, Dave, what's your take on it?
May first is, uh, workable, so I'm for it, absolutely.
So council, I think what I would do is probably for our next council meeting is just have a, a resolution where you would authorize, you know, going back to meeting in person with the option, obviously, for those that, um, that wanted to continue to meet virtually to, to do that, and we would schedule that for the first meeting in, in May, so.
All righty, anything else, Brandon?
Matt?
Oh, go ahead, Mary, so.
So you talked about putting dividers between us, are you talking about like the, the plastic ones that we all have up around here?
Yeah, the plexiglass ones, I think we can look at that, so.
That still might be a good thing to do, I mean, I just think those things are here to stay. They do make people feel more comfortable.
So, well, you know, and it will help with, you know, certain people and, and their breaths too, and as you're sitting next to them in the council chambers, so that, that would probably help as well, so.
You know, Matt, we talked about this, talking, seeing that stuff out loud.
I'm sorry, that's right, we're on camera, so.
You've got a hot mic there, Matt, so we'll.
Sorry.
All right, hey, Brandon, were you done? Did you have anything else?
Uh, no, nothing else, that was it, thank you.
All right, thanks. Mary, did you have anything else?
No, the only thing is, there was a nice article in the Sunday paper about Hutchinson. I don't know if you, if everyone saw that, but, you know, they talked about Zellows in downtown, and it was a nice article. I also wanted to thank the DMV for their great service. You know, I've had to do some things there, and they're all courteous and helpful, and very fortunate for that staff that, that is there. So shout out to our DMV. That's it, stay safe, everyone.
Thanks, Mary, Chad?
Sure, I had two things for Kent. Um, do you know when the street sweepers will be out? There's just a ton of glass out right now, and, um, that's more of a question for John, probably, but I figured he may know Kent.
Go ahead.
Yep, uh, we got a, before that, the last snow event, uh, s- street staff did have a head start on it, and we had just gotten started with street sweeping, so, yeah, there, there's a lot of sediment and, and debris and glass, and, yeah, no doubt, I think, uh, yeah, they're out again, so, yeah, they're out and about, and, uh, John's trying to, you know, get a leg up on that, and, you know, it, it is only March, so, uh, we are, we are getting at it, you know, earlier this year, but obviously, that last snow got in the way.
Sure. And the, the second thing, I just wanted to note that Kent was very classy this week 'cause his alma mater, North Dakota State, really put a whooping on my alma mater, North Dakota, on Saturday, and this was our best chance since I was in college for us to beat them, and he could have taken the low road and really rubbed it in, but he did not. So I just wanted to know how classy Kent was this week, and it was appreciated, so.
I won some money on it, too, so.
Congratulations.
Chad, I was gonna, and I actually did pass a street sweeper today when I was out and about, so they are out, so.
Perfect.
All right, thanks, Chad, Dave?
No, I don't have anything tonight, uh, except for the fact that I appreciate Brandon picking up the, uh, the idea of getting back in chambers, and, uh, I, uh, I'm very pleased with that, so. And, uh, as far as across, uh, the face, you know, like, a lot of people meet and see a lot of people every day, so haven't heard anything that was negative, but I haven't heard anything that's been really positive either. So I think it's a wash, which is a good thing, thank you.
All right, Matt?
Um, just two things I was gonna note, um, both the, the mayor and I are meeting with, uh, the League of Minnesota Cities President and Executive Director, along with, uh, the mayor of Glencoe and the minister from Glencoe later this week. Um, and then, you know, one thing that's kind of slipped our minds a little bit, but I did get a reminder from Jeremy, we are three years into our, our recent pilot agreement, and, and we had noted at that time that after three years, we were gonna kind of get back together to, to review everything and, and see how, I guess, how comfortable we are with where things are at in regards to the pilot. And so I guess I'm looking for two volunteers from the council, um, to, to sit in on that meeting. I think last time it was Gary and Chad, maybe? Um, so I don't know if the, the two of you have any interest in, in doing that again, or if there's somebody else who would like to, but it'd just be, um, you know, I think maybe a half hour to an hour meeting with, uh, a couple representatives from Hach Utilities just to kind of go over the pilot, where we're at, if we're kind of comfortable with everything, with where everything's at, so.
I'd be willing to do it again, it seems like we just did it like ten months ago, but if you say it's three, if you say it's been three years, I'll take your word for it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess I'll sit in on it unless Dave or Mary or Brandon, if you guys wanna, it's interesting to see the workings of it, that's for sure, so I don't know, one of you three wanna do it or?
Uh, when is it?
I don't know, I have to, uh, we'll have to schedule something up once I know there's interest from whoever the council members are, so.
I'd be happy to do it, sure.
Yeah, sure. Okay, otherwise, Gary, that's all I had for this evening.
All right, thanks, Matt. Um, well, the only thing I was gonna bring up was, uh, meeting in council, uh, was one. Uh, and the other thing is, uh, everybody be careful, the ice is going out on the lakes and ponds and everything else, so, um, keep the young ones off the ponds and the river and the lake, so, uh, just be safe out there. And, uh, like, uh, Chad kind of mentioned that you guys out, out riding the bikes, make sure you're careful, uh, they're out sweeping, but there's still a lot of debris out on the roads, uh, been seeing that. Chad, where, where's the bad spot, Chad, do you know?
And there's a, just a couple of hots, I like the bridge is always bad, you know, by Speedway, you know, there's always glass all over that and there's a big pile of glass over by like Hanson Gravel, near one of the pad ramps, you know, but, um, otherwise it's just kind of scattered about, you know, there's a lot of bottles that get broken over the winter and stuff. I mean, there's no like specific areas, but it seems like the bridge, I don't know if people are chucking bottles on the bridge all the time, but it seems like there's always glass on the bridge in the spring, but this year is no different.
All right, thanks, Chad. Uh, with that, uh, have a motion to adjourn?
My pleasure.
I'll stick it.
Motion by Dave, second by Mary to adjourn. Roll call, Chad?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Hi, we're adjourned, thanks, everyone.